Hello everyone and welcome to another episode of Los Bonos Talk. My name is Justin Collins. Tonight's episode is going to be interesting. I've been holding my tongue for quite some time and I really wanted to really dive in to what happened recently at our last board meeting regarding the election. And for the longest time, I really wanted to hold back because I myself, being one of the candidates, felt that it would be an issue if I was to point out some of the things that I noticed that seemed to be really wrong about the meeting. But I'm no longer concerned about this because after much reflection, I have decided that I will no longer be running for school board. And the reason is, is because of the same reason that I decided to run in the first place. I want to help the community and I feel like my role as a journalist and as someone holding our elected officials accountable in this capacity is more useful than what I would be in that capacity. And if running for office myself means that I can no longer hold individuals accountable, if running for office myself means that I can't say what I need to say or tell you what I need to tell you, then I guess I shouldn't run. And so now that I've officially declared that I'm no longer in the running, let's go back and look at that meeting. I've put together a highlight reel because let's face it, this meeting was so bad that it really deserved one. And I've compiled and taken from this meeting all the various things that you needed to really pick up on. A little bit of interpretation and some of the behind the scenes action going on. And I'll be getting into all that in just a moment, right after a brief message from our sponsors. And we're back. Thanks for watching. So those of you who've already seen the meeting, and it's quite a few, you know that there were some serious things that went awry in this meeting. There were some very questionable moments that happened. Um, it was very disturbing to watch. Um, and I tried to stay out of it the best I could and, and be neutral to the best I could simply because I was involved in it as a candidate. But I'm really glad that I went through the process as a candidate because I got a behind the scenes look at what was going on. And I got more information and I would be now able to answer some of the questions in regarding to what did candidates know and not know? What was the process like? And what was the experience like from the individual candidate's point of view? I can answer those questions now. So I'm going to give you that insight as well as insight regarding these individual moments that you might've picked up on, might not. But now when they're all run together, it'll be a little easier to see and dissect. So let's get into it. So at this point, I've already skipped past all the candidates Qs and As. Alright, so I've already gone past all the interview questions. If you want to see that part, I did another video where I took every candidate side by side and did all their questions. So question one altogether, question two altogether, three, four, five, all the way through. So I did that for you already. So if you'd like, you can go back and find that video. But now really I'm just focusing on the second half of the meeting, the meeting, the part where they got into the decision-making process. This is really where things got interesting. And so where we are at now is President Ray Martinez there in the upper left-hand corner has essentially basically just said, "Look at our team. Think about your choice." Um, "I want you to raise your hand before you speak so we're not talking over each other." And now I'm going to open it up for deliberations. Let's take a watch. I just want to talk to you real quick about becoming a supporter for Los Bonos Talk. You get exclusive behind the scenes content and opinion pieces that are available to supporters only. Plus you get all the regular videos that I do first and without ads like this one. Another way that you can become a supporter is by going to www.losbonostalk.com. Click to become a supporter tab at the top of the screen and you'll be brought here and you can see all the videos right here.
And uh, we'll go ahead and begin our deliberations. Uh, okay, there you go, Marlene. Marlene, uh, go ahead.
I would like to make, I would like to make a nomination for Dennis Reyes.
Okay, uh, we're not looking for nominations right now. We're looking for deliberation. Uh, between the, uh, for, you know, just the different points of view between the candidates here. So, uh, go ahead and hold on to that nomination, but um, uh, let's see, did you have anything to add or any comments?
I do. You know, I'll say that he brings a lot of experience. I believe he's impartial. I believe he's honest. I believe he's stern. I believe he has lots of experience. He was instrumental in purchasing land, building schools. He was around for Lorna Flasco, Jacobo High School, Tony Miller, and Mercy Springs. He was instrumental in the mitigation room with the city of Los Banas. I believe on day one, he could fill the seat to District One and be successful. He needs no orientation or training. He is sound judgment and I respect him mutually. And I'm hoping that he can get back on our board and help us through the district, the district back in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Marlene.
Uh, so let's pause for a moment and think about what we just saw here. This is kind of interesting because first off, President Ray Martinez is opening up for deliberations. Really what he's looking for is, okay, let's talk a little bit. Let's talk about what we saw of the candidates. Let's talk a little bit openly about what we'd like to see from the candidates and so on and so forth. The idea is that they would basically be able to talk about what kind of things they saw in the candidates they liked, disliked, um, what kind of things they're looking for. And then later on, they would have the talking points to really kind of basically grade, if you will, the candidates or when they start wheedling it down or coming down to a few that could maybe talk about it. But there's almost no reason for it. There's almost no call for debate. Right out the gate, um, they're already willing to, you know, nominate and, and vote for someone without really any discussion. And you saw it yourself, what were her reasons? None of them to do with the interview process, nothing to do with the application process, entirely based on prior knowledge of the individual. Now, I'm not saying that prior knowledge of someone should not come into play to some extent, of course. But if it's the sole basis, et cetera, then what on earth is the point of the interview? What on earth is the point of the applications? It's then it becomes a not what you know, but who you know. And you're going to see that thing continue on out.
Trustee Moran.
Thank you. Um, well, I just want to be transparent in terms of, uh, the notes that I took for myself. And I don't have the pleasure of having, uh, you know, that past knowledge from, from any of the candidates really. So the way that I really am basing sort of my decision is based on what I've heard tonight. And one of the things I really value as a person, uh, not only in my professional career is really that we're about to face some really hard decisions. And I value somebody that, that will go on, on record to say, "We're a team." So despite our differences, we are a team and we're going to solve this as a team. We may not always agree on things, but we're about to do things that are for our future, our children. So the ones, and I'm looking down because I'm looking down at my notes. So, um, don't think I'm being dismissive or anything like that because I really just want to quote it. Um, so when I heard, uh, from Jean, there was information about our future, uh, the teachers, uh, best approach for a team. When I heard from Alma, I also heard the same thing in terms of, uh, being a team approach, change, solution oriented. And I really, I, I value my fellow trustees that are mentioning, you know, the past knowledge and that's great. But I would be remiss if I don't discard the, the fact that I am a new board member. And I would hate to have that be held against me for not having that institutional knowledge. I was born and raised in Los Banas, for those of you that know. And that doesn't mean that somebody else doesn't have any perspective, new ideas. And from my standpoint, uh, some of the, the personality and the ability to work together as a union, uh, unison, I, I kind of, I value that. So for me, that's why I really give kudos to both Alma and Jean Lee for my end. Thank you.
Now, it's interesting, some of the things that she said just there. There's some things that she said that I agree with, but then there's some other things, uh, that are, well, kind of interesting that she brought up. So let's talk a little bit about that. So she's right in one respect. She's talking about, you know, hey, ideally we should go on, uh, you know, what we're getting from, you know, the interviews, what we're getting from the applications, what we're hearing from the candidates, et cetera. And if we're just pulling from prior knowledge, et cetera, then we're basically, uh, it's, it's basically all predetermined then. And it essentially allows no opportunity for anyone new to come on the board with the exception of via election. She has a valid point there, but she's also lying. She's claiming one that she's getting all this from her notes and she's also claiming that those are the only two candidates that mentioned team. The reality is, is that she's lying when she says that she gets it all from her notes. And she's lying when she's saying that none of her, uh, opinions on this have to do with prior knowledge of the candidates because it's not true. Alma Fabian is from their group, so to speak. She is affiliated with their political organization. And she knows her personally outside of and before this particular interview and was the, uh, endorsed or backed candidate by the same group that got Jessica Moran into office. So to say that she's basing it purely off of her notes and that she has no prior knowledge of the candidate is a flat-out lie. She was already going to vote for Alma Fabian regardless of what she said or didn't say in the interview. It really didn't matter.
Uh, Gary.
Okay. I kind of, um, took notes, okay, and listened to everybody. And, uh, it seems like, like everyone has a personal agenda. Okay. My vote will go to Alma Fabian. Okay, she has clear insight on what it is, is needed for students and the curriculum that we're using.
Now here's something that's really interesting and I'll pause here. He's reading from somewhere. Now, I don't know where he's reading from, but he's reading from somewhere. And it's interesting that he said he took notes. Because when we go back through the footage of all the people asking questions and, and giving their answer, he's sitting back like this most of the time. It actually doesn't seem like he takes hardly any notes. A few times he takes notes during when Alma speaks, that's about it. And it doesn't seem like a lot. So when was this written down? Did he write this prepared speech before we even got to the meeting? Was this something that was on his phone? Was this something sent to him as an email? I don't know. But the point is, is he obviously didn't write this in the meeting. And he's reading it. He's reading a few words, looking at the camera saying it, reading a few words, looking at the camera saying it. It's so obvious. I'll continue playing and you can see that he's, he's literally reading. Maybe it's his words or maybe it's someone else's, but he's reading from something. This is not just some organic thing that popped into his head.
She has energy in moving students forward. She's a teacher for what, 20 years? And she has my vote.
Again, interesting, right? Because supposedly we're not basing this off prior knowledge of people. We're just basing it off of, you know, the interviews, et cetera. But how would he know about the amount of years, et cetera, that she was teaching? If this is just purely based on what we're being given in front of us because she didn't mention it in the interview. And we don't seem to have the applications and, but again, where's that coming from? How is that coming from notes? None of those things were said during the interview process. If it's from the application, okay, but then when, when did he take that note? Was it before? And so did he decide his vote before the meeting? Well, obviously yes, because he had a pre-written or prepared statement he just read from. And it was written prior to the meeting. And it's so obvious just based on the fact that he wasn't taking notes during the meeting. He wasn't doing anything during the meeting. Most of the meeting, he was sitting back. And so when on earth was he writing this elaborate, you know, short little speech for, uh, Alma Fabian? I don't know, but it obviously wasn't while they were interviewing. And obviously he didn't get the information from just the interview because, let's face it, she never mentioned, you know, that she didn't talk about her 20 years of experience teaching during her portion of the interview. So where did that come from? It's kind of slipping, but it's basically showing us that yeah, there's prior knowledge of the candidate. Now I know that, but here's evidence for you who don't know that to also know it.
Uh, I'm last and, uh, again, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming forward. Uh, all, you know, uh, powerful candidates in different ways. And, um, I, um, you know, I, I, I agree with, um, and you, you've heard the strengths of, of the different candidates. And, uh, the one to me, uh, that, uh, you know, I was looking for insight. I was looking for vision and insight. And, um, and, you know, again, I agree with, uh, trustee Moran that, uh, Jean Liv and Alma Fabian had the most, uh, vision and insight uh, to what, you know, we're looking to do here on the board and to complement the team. And so, um, with that, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, open it up to voting.
So I just want to make a note here. So at this point, what we've seen so far is we've seen, uh, Gary Munoz say that he supports Alma Fabian. We've seen Anthony Perea represent, uh, or say that he supports Dennis Reyes. Mark Benton has also said she supports Dennis Reyes. Marlene Smith also says she supports Dennis Reyes. Jessica Moran has said that she would support either Jean Lee or Alma Fabian. And now we have Ray Martinez also saying he would support either Jean Lee or Alma Fabian. So that is essentially the breakdown at this point now. No surprise to me, but one candidate that hasn't come up yet at all, of course, is myself. But I honestly knew that for obvious reasons, mainly the show, I'm not well-liked by any of them. So I kind of saw that coming. And you can kind of see that I'm kind of holding back a little bit. Um, from almost chuckling during this because I, I, I can tell. I mean, it's, 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 it's very obvious, but, but again, I know. So basically what's happening here is Marlene Smith, she had already, uh, you know, nominated Dennis Reyes. So Tina is basically kind of going back saying, well, we already kind of have that nomination. So we're just going to start from there so I can fix the minutes. And so now they're about to proceed forward with the vote for Dennis and you'll see how that vote goes.
Please ask just, I know I can go back and listen to tape later on, but I prefer to just so we can, so we can just correct.
I made a motion to vote for Dennis Reyes as school board trustee for District Number One.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you. And Mr. President, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by Marlene, uh, Smith, uh, to vote for Dennis Reyes. Uh, is there a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, uh, Pareda has seconded the motion. And so we'll do a roll call vote for all those in favor of Dennis Reyes.
Okay, Ms. Benton?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
No.
Mr. Munoz?
No.
Mr. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Martinez?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jean Lee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have another motion on the floor, uh, to appoint, uh, Jean Lee. Um, roll call vote, Tina?
Ms. Benton?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
No.
Mr. Munoz?
No.
Mr. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Martinez?
Uh, no.
And I'm Jessica Moran. I make the motion, uh, to appoint Alma Fabian for trustee area one.
Hey, second now.
We got a motion on the floor in a second, uh, by trustee Moran and Munoz to appoint Alma Fabian. Uh, roll call vote, Tina?
Ms. Benton?
No.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mr. Pereira?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Um, no.
And Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
I move that we nominate Justin Collins.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion on the floor, uh, by trustee Benton and a second by trustee Pareda to nominate Justin Collins. Uh, roll call vote, Tina?
Ms. Benton?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
No.
Mr. Munoz?
No.
Mr. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
And Mr. Martinez?
Oh.
So let's pause here for a moment and think about what we just saw. Okay. So basically what's happened here is this, Dennis was first nominated. And then he got three yeses from one side, which is the Anthony Pereira, Mark Benton and Marlene Smith side. So that side gave him three yeses. Then what happens is then Anthony nominates Jean Lee. Now keep in mind, we just saw earlier, they had just said Jessica Moran and, and Ray Martinez had just said that they liked both candidates, Alma Fabian and Jean Lee. So Anthony puts up that vote. And then what happens? Well, three yeses from Anthony, Marlene and Mark. And then three no's from Ray, Jessica and Gary, which is kind of interesting because just a moment ago, they said that they liked those two candidates. They didn't really say that they preferred Alma the best. At this point, they haven't. Later on, they will. But at this point, they just said that they liked those two. And then finally, and I think it's because it's just to go through it since everyone's been a deadlock, I get nominated by Mark Benton, Anthony seconds it, those two people vote yes. And then everyone else votes no, giving me four no's and two yeses. So then that makes me essentially the first candidate ultimately eliminated. So going forward from this point on, really the only three candidates left are Dennis Reyes, Jean Lee and Alma Fabian. All three being in the three-way tie, three to three, three to three, three to three. Me being four to two.
Give us a minute here to tally these votes. Uh, you know, do you have them tallied there?
Yeah, us, um,
Okay.
For.
So this is the other thing that was kind of annoying throughout this night, over and over again. He keeps asking to re-tally the votes and it's just three to three. I mean, it's, it's really simple, three to three, three to three, three to three. And he knows who voted for who. But he keeps asking for a tally as if somehow by asking for a tally like that will somehow change, like, like he'll pick up a vote or something somehow. I keep continuously asking for a tally. It's six votes. It's not like we're dealing with 100 or 50 or 20 or even 10. It's, it's just six, three, three.
Dennis Reyes?
We have, uh, three yeses and three no's.
Okay.
In fact, we're going to skip through this because I'm pretty sure you guys can remember it's three, 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 four, two.
Okay, trustee Munoz?
Yes. Okay. Here. I have to go with, um, Alma Fabian. She brings strength to the Unified School District. Okay, including two years of teaching. She has experience working with kids. She has good.
So here's one thing I'm confused about. Earlier it was like 20 years of teaching. Now it's two years of teaching. I don't really know which one is right, but the thing is, is he's reading this from somewhere. He's reading and, I mean, did he have this before? Was this sent to him later? I think that he was receiving text messages during the meeting and was reading from his phone. And I'll get to it a little bit later, but you're going to see where his phone's going off and he doesn't have his mic muted. And he's looking at it, reading, but you can clearly tell from this, he's reading these talking points from his phone. Someone is sending him information to his phone to read off into the meeting in support of Alma Fabian. I don't know if we could argue they're trying to influence his vote. But what they are doing is basically giving him information so someone outside of this board essentially is really doing the talking right now. And that's an issue. And I'm pretty sure that makes his phone actually accessible to the public or at least the duration of the time from this meeting, since he's using it to read stuff into the meeting.
Sorry, on what we need to better our system. The teacher behind the lines on the school board, we can't go wrong on that. Just her experience and her valuable information that she has, that she leaks, then, um, that's where we have to go. Alma Fabian.
Okay. Um, you know, I want to thank all the trustees for, for comments and, um, you know, again, we've got, you know, three people here that we're looking at right now. And they all have their different strengths. Um, I specifically was looking for vision. I was looking for insight. And, um, and, um, you know, insight to that vision. And, uh, the one that sticks out to me.
Wait, I'm sorry. I, 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 not, not to be a jerk here, but I, I kind of have to pick on this a little bit. He was specifically looking for insight, vision, and then insight into that vision. Which I don't, I'm not even really sure what that's supposed to mean, but that's, I guess, what he was looking for. These are rather philosophical terms, honestly. They're very ambiguous. Who knows what they really are? Are they really qualities or, or things that we could say are qualities of a candidate? I guess we could, but you know, and we're talking about vision and stuff. I mean, what, what do you mean by that? Because to me, when I hear vision, I think that means you're thinking of what will the future, the distant future of the district look like? What are things coming down the line? And in my personal opinion, I mean, looking at the candidates, the way everyone interviewed and stuff, I can't really say that anyone really expressed that, that much, uh, very distant vision. It mostly had to do with things coming in kind of the recent down the pipe. I mean, people talked about COVID and stuff, but that really wouldn't fit the, the criteria of vision. That's really talking about things in the here and now, and it's a temporary problem. To me, things like vision are talking about long-term solutions for our kids, talking about things like long-term goals for our kids, et cetera. And generally speaking, I think myself and Dennis were really the only two candidates that really talked about those kind of things that would meet that kind of criteria. As far as insight, um, you could make, I would say you're probably your best, I mean, that's kind of subjective too. You could say that Jean maybe has some insight with, with his reporting and stuff and, and things that he's done in the community regarding the, the board. You could say that Alma has insight at, from being a, a teacher. You could say, I guess that I have insight. You could say, I guess, that I have insight from doing what I do and covering local politics in the school board. And you could say Dennis definitely has insight from just being on the board for twenty-one years. So needless to say, I mean, everyone kinda had something that you could argue was insight, but vision and then insight into that vision, I don't even know what that's supposed to mean. But that's basically what we're going by here, I guess.
Had that. Uh, mostly was Alma Fabian. And so you know, again, the other candidates had other strengths.
But they didn't have vision or insight into that vision.
To me, Alma Fabian had that insight and that vision, and nobody else had really mentioned uh vision. And uh.
And neither did her. Nobody really mentioned vision or talked about it. I mean, that's kind of the thing that's kind of silly with this whole thing. If you really break it down, because I had to do a side-by-side comparison of all the candidates, and what's interesting is I speak for about, so we're all given twenty minutes. I speak for about nineteen minutes. Dennis speaks for about nineteen minutes. Jean Lieb speaks for about nine and a half, and Alma Fabian speaks for about ten and a half. I think what's surprising about this process to almost everyone is just the fact that the two candidates that seem to have the least to say and seem to do the worst in the interview are ironically the only two that we're down to. And then they seem to really be dragging and pulling, grasping for straws here to try to pull out things, like to say they had insight or whatever, because the problem is, is they said the least, and they didn't really say a lot. Even some of the points that they're really giving people credit for, you can't really give them credit for in their interview. I mean, it's not to be mean, but let's be real here. Can you really say there was this grandiose vision or insight within Alma Fabian or Jean Lieb's interview? I mean, they spoke for half the time they had available. In some of the cases, they didn't even really fully answer the questions all the way. They neither really seemed to have a full grasp on what actually the board totally does, at least based on the interview. And so it just becomes increasingly obvious that this is just, they have personal political sides. And it's obvious, you know, Jean Lieb, Dennis Reyes, they have the same kind of mutual friend group, and they're both Rotary Club, et cetera, with Marg. And so they know that they're on that side. They're gonna support Anthony Marg, and they're gonna support Marlene, and that if either one of those two candidates get in there, they're gonna oust Ray as president. And simultaneously, Ray knows the only shot he has of staying as president is if he gets in a candidate that's from his group, and Alma Fabian is that. So both of these sides are really just playing partisan politics. A lot of people want to say that, you know, okay, you know, they're really going for their second best or whatever, but not really. It's really the same. At the end of the day, the goal is to get, they want four votes in order to get rid of Ray. Ray needs four votes to stay in, and that's what this is about. Ray knows it's Alma or bust, and they know pretty much they can get either Jean or Dennis in there, and either one will work. And as far as me, they've probably figured me as a wild card because I'm not really on anyone's side.
So, uh, go ahead. Uh, Amir, what, uh, no.
This is Dennis. I'm on Amir's. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, but none of the candidates are allowed to make any other comments.
Well, but no, I'm not gonna make any comment, but maybe it would help your matter out if you let the candidates vote to break this tie.
Uh, no, that's not part of the process, so.
Well.
Couldn't do that. Uh, it's a trustee decision. It's not a candidate decision, but thanks anyway.
So that was one of the things that was also really strange with this whole process. I was kind of a little bit floored by it, that Dennis actually would come forward and basically say, can we vote for ourselves? Can us candidates break the tie? Obviously, that's not part of the process, never was part of the process. He should definitely know that. Uh, it's kind of weird he would even ask, and frankly, out of line. In his defense, did they tell us that we, as the candidates, could not speak anymore going forward into deliberation as only trustees? No, they didn't actually tell us this. However, I knew that to be the case, and I think it was kind of obvious, and most of us seemed to know. I think they just kind of assumed that we knew. But needless to say, this was totally inappropriate. But one of the things that a lot of people aren't really aware of is a lot of people think that this is the moment that got him disqualified, but it actually isn't. Uh, I'm actually gonna talk, show you more later, but that's really where he gets pulled out. So notice at this point, Ray's continuing with the meeting, even after the interjection reminds him, hey, you're not allowed to talk during this part, but Dennis is still here. No one's disqualified him as of yet. So Jessica's about to finish speaking, but one of the things that I find interesting is the selective enforcement of the hand-raising rule, right? Because this is gonna come up a little bit later as things get more heated. But you're gonna notice, you're gonna see Marg raising her hand. She has a comment she'd like to say. Gary just jumps in there and speaks. No problem with that. And then something else comes up.
I'm voting as to my number one, two, and three. And so if we were to all name our one, two, and three, it would then be evident which the top two are.
I'm looking. Anybody else have any other comments?
Ray, you know, it can go the other way, just like what Anthony was talking about. You know, you have three candidates that are picking two, you got three board members that are picking two candidates. We have three board members picking one candidate. Okay, it can go either way. You know, is what we think, what we think is what we need for the district, what will make the district healthy. Okay, what Anthony just said, you can just turn that around and bring back the vote to uh to Alma Fabian instead of uh Dennis Reyes or Jean Lieb. So he can go either way. It's not where you have three board members picking two candidates or have three board members picking one candidate. It's not that. It's not that at all. It is what is needed for the school, the school board.
Exactly. It's what's needed for the school board, and we have said, you know, we could work with either one of Jean or Dennis. We have said, that's great. We will do that. Let's be fine, let's just be fiscally responsible here. And get off the phone.
There's a point that comes up here. Get off the phone. I mean, his phone is going off constantly. Now, up until this point, you haven't heard it because he wasn't the one speaking, but now his mic is turned on because he's the one speaking. And you could just see how often his phone is going off with text messages. He is constantly in direct communication with someone outside of this meeting, and he is reading off things from those text messages into the meeting. It is blatantly obvious, and that's worrisome. Now, I couldn't tell you exactly who it is, but that's an issue. That basically tells you that someone outside of the board is helping them essentially work together, collude, in order to, you know, push for one particular candidate. Now, if you vote for, you know, Gary, then you vote for just Gary, but who is feeding Gary this stuff? You know, this constant cellphone thing at the meeting, it's two things. One, it's unethical, but also it's just unprofessional. And I mean, how bad is that to be phone snubbing the other trustee when they're trying to basically negotiate and talk with you regarding something as important as this? Okay, so this is the point really where Dennis Reyes is essentially, or effectively, eliminated in it. Notice that it is some time long after that interjection took place. So if you really follow the timeline here, that interjection in and of itself actually wasn't when he was really eliminated. This is the point in which he was eliminated long after that.
Uh, you're trustee Moran.
I just have a quick question. I don't see, uh, Mr. Dennis Reyes, did something happen where he disconnected by accident?
I will go check.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Here, Ray, here you had Fabian. Okay, but then, well, I'll tell you what, here's Jean Lieb. Okay, and answering his questions, okay, he was very short. He really didn't know, to me, he really didn't know what to say or where to go with those questions. Okay, and then you, okay, which didn't, which I said, um, which I say he can't give us the support that we need on the board. And then you have Dennis Reyes. Okay, you have Dennis Reyes, yes, he has knowledge in the background, okay, but then again, I know Dennis Reyes, and I know where he comes from. Okay, I've done my research on that. Okay, and then again, here at the end, he comes in and he says, tells us how to run this nomination. How to run this voting for the new trustee. Okay, I mean, really, that takes a lot of gold to come out and say, hey, since you got these two, let the candidates vote. No, that's not the way, that's just not realistic for him to come out and say, hey, I have an idea. Now, that's it. There's two marks right there on both of them.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, basically, I've learned that Mr. Reyes has left.
If Mr. Reyes has left, uh, that tells me that he has disqualified himself from this process, so. Uh, make note of that, Tina. And the time that he's left and um uh, we're, to me, that we're down to two candidates, should be Jean Lieb.
Right, so effectively, this is the moment in where Dennis is deemed as disqualified. Um, it is seen as him withdrawing himself. So he left sometime before this, but this is the moment and where they noticed he was gone. So there are debates and questions out there, like was Dennis eliminated by, you know, Ray prior to, et cetera? But as you can tell, the video clearly shows that actually Ray simply just told him, hey, you can't comment during this time, and that was it. He was actually really eliminated himself by just leaving. And then they interpreted this as him disqualifying himself or withdrawing from the process. Now, did they tell us that if we leave the process that we are disqualified? No, they did not tell us this. I can say that as a candidate myself, but it probably doesn't look good if you leave in the middle of the process while you're being talked about, so I don't really know. I can't really defend that either way, but that's how this decision was arrived to. So now you can see for yourself that, no, he really more eliminated himself. He left at that time, and no one really eliminated him. And actually, he left long before this. Looking back on it, it seems like he left probably twenty minutes ago, but no one noticed it until now. So I think sometime shortly after his, uh, you know, he raised his hand and brought up his point, his comment. I think shortly after then is when he left, and then it wasn't noticed or talked about until about now. But essentially, he really kind of withdrew at that point. So here's a, an interesting part. At one point, the president tries to seem to pull in Dr. Marshall to weigh in on the process, but Dr. Marshall, I think, in my opinion, handles it quite well and explains that he's not supposed to be involved.
Great talk. I want everybody else to have the chance to say what they're gonna say. Um, we haven't heard from Dr. Marshall. I'd like to have your input on what you've heard and what you've seen.
Uh, this is really your process. I mean, I've listened to everything, but it's your process. Hear me?
Heard you.
I said, can you hear me? This is your, this is the board's process.
Yeah.
No, it is.
Process, right here.
Anything that you wanted to add to this before we continue? I'm just giving you an opportunity.
Right. I appreciate it, but I'm not, really, I'm not one of the trustees, so I really shouldn't get in there.
Okay. That's fine. Um.
Honestly, he handled that brilliantly. Uh, that's exactly what he should have said. He really, his comment is no comment. Yeah, he made that very firm and clear and really handled that well. So this is a question that Ms. Benton, Mark Benton's about to ask. Uh, it is one of the moments I didn't really find very, I didn't feel like was very appropriate.
Okay, um, go ahead, trustee Benton.
I wonder for Alma and for Jean, how many times can you make a board meeting at two o'clock in the afternoon? We need to get it done. We need to get it done. So could you do that, Alma?
Will we go back to in-person meetings, you mean? Because we're gonna go back to in-person meeting soon.
Right. Would that be possible?
We are done asking questions.
Now, I want to point something out here. You see, Jean, at this point, he was raising his hand a minute ago, like saying, I guess I could answer that. Alma, you can see her mouthing yes and nodding her head, but here's the thing. Candidates aren't supposed to talk anymore, and at this point, we should know this because Dennis left already, and Dennis had already commented in the meeting and was already reprimanded by it. She did say for Jean and Alma, but then she specifically said Alma. You can tell Alma, you can tell by her expression right here that she seems conflicted and unsure, like, should I answer this or not answer this? It really seems like Marg is actually trying to trick her into disqualifying herself. And if that's what she's doing, shame. That's bad. And not only that, but at this point, there's no excuse for not knowing that candidates aren't supposed to ask any more questions. And while I get your point, that's kind of relevant to an extent. Um, are we saying that basically all we want are people on the board who are retired or business owners? And self-employed? Is that it? Are we basically saying if you want to be on the board, you need to be retired, and you need to be self-employed? Because if we're basically saying that working people, average people, middle-class people are by proxy disqualified because they can't show up at 2:00 PM sometimes to an impromptu meeting, uh, I mean, is that really what we're trying to say here? So first off, the question bothered me because basically it's saying that only retired people and only self-employed people are eligible in a sense. So that's one thing that disturbed me. But the other thing was, it disturbed me even more, is this seems like a blatant attempt, really targeted at Alma, to get her to disqualify herself. Now, whether you like Alma or not, doesn't really matter. There's a right way to disqualify a candidate and a wrong way, and that's the wrong way.
I didn't get an answer.
We're bringing our minds ourselves. We're not pulling the candidates back into the question here.
Okay.
This right here, what I'm about to show you, uh, is probably one of the most controversial points of the night and kind of seems to really abruptly end the night. But this is essentially where President Ray Martinez kind of puts his foot in his mouth by bringing up uh, one of the reasons he likes the candidate Alma Fabian is essentially race.
Right now, a few things. Um, when trustee Paredo was talking and, you know, uh, he brought up diversity and how important it is, and I agree with that. Um, I also agree with, uh, when we're talking diversity, uh, you know, the demographics of District One, if I'm correct, is what, almost eighty percent Hispanic? And to me, it's very important that, uh, that district, because of its demographics, should be represented by, you know, should be well-represented.
I think you're, I think you're on the urge of being out of line.
Uh, let me finish talking. Trustee Potato, Demian, raise your hand. If you do that again, yeah, I'm going to turn you off.
No, you can't turn me off, so just, I'll, I'll be careful, but don't turn me off. You can't do that.
Yeah, I can.
No, you can't, but that's okay.
Raise your hand and I will put you in the lineup. So, anyway, uh, in our consideration, yeah, it's, uh, we need to, yeah, I mean, we can, again, uh, bring up all kinds of points, counterpoints. But, you know, we need to push through this and try to anyway, uh, to avoid going into election. And, and I did talk to the Elections Department, and they said that we've missed the deadline at this point in time for anything to happen.
So essentially, what was going on was a couple of things that were really disturbing. One, Ray was essentially making the argument that because the district is largely Hispanic, so too should be the appointed representative also be Hispanic. And so he essentially was saying race as one of the primary reasons for selecting someone, which Anthony was trying to basically stop him from going too far with it and outright saying that because it opens the district up to lawsuit, uh, if, if, if he was to continue on. So he was trying to kind of stop him. So in many ways, Anthony was really looking out for him. Uh, Anthony could have kept his mouth shut, and Ray was about to go full circle with this whole race thing. And Anthony really kind of cut him off before he got to finish. And I guess because Anthony was looking out for the district, but he actually was doing him a favor. But Ray didn't really see it that way. He, uh, was threatening to basically mute him, cut him off, not let him speak in the meeting, which Anthony had to remind him, you can't really do that. And it kind of got ugly. And as you can see from the bottom of the screen, there's only about 10 minutes left of the meeting. So really, after this point is kind of where everyone realizes this ain't going anywhere. Looks like special election, here we come. So to recap, here were some of the things that I think were most important to be taken away. One, there was texting during the meeting, and people were reading off statements and comments that were coming from their phone, tablet, email, something, or pre-written down. But there were, there were information being read into the meeting that wasn't originating from the individuals themselves reading said meeting. We have a right to know who is that person? Why are they sending them their message? And how much influence do they have over the candidates and their votes? The second thing that we can take away from this meeting is that the trustees are kind of lying about the justifications for why they like who they like. It's obvious that people had personal reasons for who they liked, who, and it mainly had to do with the overall battle for the presidency, the overall control of the school board, and who they know would be on their side. Trustees were obviously, uh, lying about saying that they were taking information only from interview, only from application, et cetera, when they clearly knew information about candidates that weren't even supplied in said application or mentioned in the interview, when they're pulling out points, uh, that obviously didn't come from the interviews. And when we get down to the last two candidates that actually had the least to say in the interviews, we have an awkward moment in where Dennis Arias tries to interject himself and essentially make the case that they should, candidates should be allowed to basically vote for themselves or break the tie, followed by, uh, him eventually leaving, thus maybe disqualifying himself. But it really revealed something in the whole process, which was simply that candidates weren't really made well aware, nor were trustees made well aware of the full process and of its rules. So when something like this did come up, no one really knew exactly what was supposed to take place, which kind of allows for you to make up the rules as you go, which seems to kind of been what was going on. And finally, trustees often would try to make it about the application or about the interviews in some way, shape, or form to justify it later on. But in reality, all decisions were being based on prior knowledge of the individual. Alma Fabian is the candidate that is selected and endorsed by the same group that backs Ray Martinez, Gary Munoz, and Jessica Moran. And similarly speaking, Gene Leib and Dennis Arias are also candidates that would support Anthony Perea, Marlene Smith, and Mark Benton. Now, of course, there's been differences and things in the past, but now the board has become so split that some of those differences don't really mean anything anymore. And people are willing to put past issues aside in order to work together again in a different way. But there's basically two political factions within our school board, and you're seeing it play out there. The interviews, et cetera, the applications was really kind of all a farce. Both sides had already had their candidates picked and who they were going to go with and had a strategy going into it. Many people had pre-prepared statements. They were already ready to read it within the meeting. And apparently, people outside the meeting were texting them and giving them information to make sure that they vote and stay in accordance to what they're supposed to. Now, if you haven't already, please like, follow, subscribe to Los Bonos Talk. We have Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, and of course, losbonostalk.com. You can become a supporter of Los Bonos Talk for just $4.99 a month and get all the videos first and ad-free. Plus, get behind-the-scenes bonus and exclusive content and keep local independent journalism alive and well. We have some interesting episodes coming up here in the near future. Be having a candidate running for Congress in our district coming up here soon this week, as well as Stacy Sousa Elms from the Economic and Development Advisory Commission. She's going to be coming on and talking about all the new businesses and new things happening in town and economic development that's going on with downtown, as well as many of the new stores and such that are coming to town and what the city's doing about it. Once again, my name is Justin Collins, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day.